Call our meeting to order tonight? Renata, if you could do the roll call, please.
Evans?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
English? McEvers?
Here.
Wood?
Here.
Gookin?
Yes.
Let's please rise for the invocation. We have Pastor Tim Remington with us tonight. Welcome, Tim.
Thank you. The reason they sent me down here is because they figured out you couldn't pronounce Pastor Mike's last name anyway, so. What an important day this is. So, let's pray. Father, we come before you right now, and we do want to thank you. We also want to ask for your guidance. Lord, this past year has been all over the place. And we just pray, Lord God, that you'll see us through all the way to the end of this year and watch out after us. And today, Lord God, is a very important day. It's an important day, not just for this city, but for this nation. And so, we pray right now, Lord God, that you will guide this nation and help us, Lord God, on these elections to be sure, to be accurate, and for there to be truth involved in everything, Lord. And for this meeting that's going on in the City Council all the time, Lord God, every Tuesday, they meet. And when they meet, Lord God, they meet to try to do the best for this city. And we pray, Lord God, that you will be with our mayor and every one of the council members that are here. We pray, Father, that you'll give them wisdom and knowledge and understanding. We pray, Lord, that you will work through them and in them to be able to help them, Lord God, to be able to be wise in the decisions that they make. And so, tonight, Lord God, we just dedicate everything that is said and everything that is done to you for the furthering, Lord God, of your kingdom and this great city, Lord. We live in one of the best cities in the world. And every time I leave and come back, I just thank God for this city. And so, we do right now, thank you, Lord God, for everything that has happened in this city, and thank you for the leadership that is here. Now, guide and direct them, and we ask you in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Woody, lead us in the pledge.
I'm all inspired, thanks, Reverend. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as well.
We don't have any amendments to the agenda now, so we'll move on to public comment. Anyone wishing to address the council on city government business, you'll have three minutes to do so. Do we have anyone for public comment tonight?
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and distinguished citizens of Coeur d'Alene. You are amazing. My name is Jeanette Laster, and I am the director, executive director of the Human Rights Education Institute here in beautiful City Park, located in beautiful City Park. First, today is one of the most important days of our entire year, Election Day. It is a day when each and every one of us, regardless of where we stand on the issues or what candidates we support, we can make our voices heard. Voting is one of our most fundamental rights and also one of the most important ways we can exercise the freedoms we hold most dear. And I had originally planned to read you some history, but I caught wind of a post today from our recently retired David Townsend, and I'd like to read his post to you. "I am flying the flag today. Nothing fancy, just a plain old American flag. It doesn't have my candidate's name or anything else printed on it, just the usual stars and stripes in the usual colors. I am flying my flag today. It's in its bracket on the front of my house. It's not going to mount it. I'm not going to mount it on my car and drive around. I'm not going to wrap myself in it. I'm not taking my flag and my guns to town. They are fine right where they are. I am not flying my flag because we are at war. I'm not flying my flag because I am superior or more patriotic than any other American or any other nationality, for that matter. I am flying that flag because I am American. And today is the day Americans have the privilege to democratically decide their own future. We decide again whether we are a nation governed by law or whether we are ruled by a small group of wealthy men or by the crowd that makes the most noise or the people with the most guns and the biggest pickup trucks. I am flying my flag today. Tonight, I will put it away respectfully, as I have so many times before, and tomorrow, well, we shall see." And I'd also like to take this time to restate our mission at HRAI, which is to celebrate diversity and human rights by educating, raising awareness, and recognizing the value of all humanity. HRAI is a 501(c)(3) public charity, and its programs are nonpartisan. We are here for our entire community. From its inception, HRAI has worked to create and support a community and region where all people physically, all people feel physically and psychologically safe and secure. We have also had an objective towards economic viability to create a community and region where businesses and corporations want to locate. This is the work of the Human Rights Consortium. Our steering committee met this past week, and we have identified six to seven actionable items or goals that we can begin working on immediately. And I would like to present this information to you now and ask in advance and thank council for their approval of the support of this work.
All right. Thank you, Jeanette. Appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to give public comments tonight? Not seeing anyone else, we will move on to announcements. Any member of the council have an announcement tonight? Kiki?
I have a couple. First, from the library. Wanted to let the rest of council and the general public be reminded that they have gone back to curbside remote service. It's offered from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday, and there will be no services offered on Sunday. They have a full schedule of online children's and teens programming that's continuing. A bunch of their kits and things that are available through curbside have really had a surge in popularity, so you can go online and find out all the different things, the library services that are still available, just not in that building. The trustees have chosen to set services level on a monthly basis moving forward. They hope that that will give them at least seven days in advance so that patrons will have some consistency and allow the library to plan, schedule, and then advertise their hours with a greater degree so that people won't be confused every day about what the library services are. And the other quick thing is the Arts Commission did approve the Performing Arts Grants Award recipients, and those should be coming to council hopefully at our next meeting.
Thank you, Kiki. Kristi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Atlas Steering Committee met today. It was just an informational meeting by Zoom and talking about Phase Two. And it probably will be many more meetings between now and the spring, but in the spring, it's anticipated RFPs will go out for Phase Two.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else have anything? Okay, we'll move on to consent calendar. Wood?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to approve consent calendar as presented, including Resolution 20060.
Second.
Motion and a second on the consent calendar. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Renata?
Wood?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Aye.
Motion carried. We'll move on to General Service Public Works. First item is authorization of the use of impact fees to improve the Police Department records and investigation facilities. Chief White?
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. What I have in front of you today is a fairly straightforward request, but I'm going to break it up into two different parts, so hopefully it's a little bit easier to understand exactly what the request is. The entirety of the request is to use impact fees to make some pretty significant improvements to our front desk area, our records area, as well as the investigations area. And so, the first part of this is the record section. Our front desk is really not conducive to conducting business with individuals who want to come in and either speak to an officer or report crimes of that nature or report crimes and things like that. There's no ability for us to carry on a private conversation, so sometimes people want to come in and report, say, a domestic violence crime or a child crime or something a little more sensitive. They really have to shout through the glass, and that's not really conducive to being good public servants, we don't think. So, part of the improvement would alter that front desk area. Additionally, in the back towards where the records area itself is, we would be adding two workspaces to that area. And the second part of this request is to renovate an existing waiting room for the investigation section into a soft interview room. So, if you can picture what you typically see in TV, an interview room, it's just a sterile room with a metal table and a metal chair. And oftentimes, that's kind of off-putting to victims of crimes and witnesses and especially children who might be victims or witnesses of crimes. And so, our request is to renovate that waiting room into a soft interview room for victims and witnesses of some of our more provocative crimes. The total cost of this project should not exceed $49,700, and we have adequate funding within our impact fee account for this upgrade.
Thank you, Chief. Questions? Counsel? Pretty straightforward project. So, we'd be looking for council action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to authorize the use of impact fees to improve the Police Department records and investigation facilities.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Renata?
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Aye.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Affirmative.
Wood?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, Chief. So, Kiki, are you and Dan going to think of different things to say?
Yep, every time.
You said aye, and then he says affirmative.
I know.
So, be thinking of other ways.
Working on it.
Okay. So, next piece of business, under other business, is Resolution Number 20-061, Approval of a Professional Services Agreement with Welsh Comer &amp; Associates for the Design of La Crosse Avenue. And we have Chris Bosley on Zoom.
All right. Can everybody hear me okay?
We can.
All right. Well, thank you for having me before you tonight. The reason why I'm here, as you know, we've got the La Crosse Avenue project that Ignite CDA has graciously contributed $1.8 million towards that project. But the catch is that we have to have the project done by the end of their fiscal year, and to do that, we're running out of time. So, Welch Comer, when they were doing their Atlas Millsite project, they had actually went out on a limb and did survey along the Four Corners BLM corridor just so that they had that topographic information in advance. Well, it worked out for them pretty well because with the short timeline on this project, they are in a pretty good position to be able to get this project done. With snow coming, we were really fearing that we weren't going to have enough time to be able to get the survey done and then, of course, get the design done for that. So, I've worked with them and negotiated a contract that you see before you tonight. And what I'm asking you is if you would approve the contract so we can get started on design. They have a little bit more survey work to do on the ground to tie it in to their aerial survey, and then we'll be set to go. And then, we should have the project designed this winter and bid in the spring or this winter, and then construction in the spring and summer of next year. So, with that, I would stand for any questions.
Thank you, Chris. Council questions for Chris. Woody?
Chris, do you have a budget for that, for their design work?
Well, it's part of the $1.8 million that we have for design and construction, so it'll come from that. And there's plenty of money there for design and construction, so we're right where we need to be.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Chris? Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Chris, I've gotten some, I don't know where you are. I've gotten some feedback from people who claim that we just give a lot of work to Welsh Comer. And so, this just is kind of another example. Can you explain to me what would be involved and what steps would be necessary if we were to send this out to bid, to like, open bid for all engineering firms to apply? How would that work?
Yeah. So, if this couldn't be considered an extension of the Four Corners BLM corridor project, which is the way that we're working with it, because they've already done conceptual design for this roadway and the park, the parking lot and all that with that project, if it was going to go out to RFP, Request for Proposal, to other engineers who would have to be advertised, well, I would be before you tonight asking for permission to go out to proposal or RFP, and then we would wait two weeks and get those proposals in, and then we would score those proposals, and then we would come back to you and ask to enter a contract with the chosen engineering company. And so, we would be looking at probably another month before we could get started. And we all know it snowed in October, so it seems like we've got a little bit of a fire under us on this one. Normally, I would have gone through that process, but considering how quick we need to move on this, I thought it was a creative way to get through this as fast as we could.
Thank you. And question, follow-up question to our city attorney, Mr. Gridley. What does the code say about RFPs? Is there a threshold on a dollar amount, or how does that work?
Not sure what you mean by a threshold. Are you saying a lower threshold or an upper threshold?
For a dollar amount. So, I mean, if we're going to hire an engineer for a couple hundred bucks, not that we could, but I mean, these kind of things don't need to go out to bid because they're considered routine, but there is something in statutes, or is there, that says that if it's above a certain dollar amount, it must go out to a bidding process?
No, not for professional services, because I think that's something where I think you could argue you don't want to take the lowest bid on who's going to design something for you. So, professional services are typically put out for proposals and then negotiated and scored, as Chris said. So, there's no real dollar amount because you don't know many times how big that's going to be, how big the project's going to be.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions for Chris? Kristi?
Well, Mr. Mayor, just a comment along what Dan was saying. I think it was the last General Services meeting. I might have asked a similar question about when we go out and put these out for RFP. And I believe, Troy could answer this. I believe that some of the reason you see the same firms over and over, especially this one, maybe is, wasn't there a 10-year bidding process?
Yeah. Chris actually helped with that to get a list of professional service providers that had been pre-qualified so that we could go do these contracts in a much quicker fashion.
That's what I thought. So, that plays into it a lot, too. Thank you, Troy.
Any other questions from council? No other questions, we'd be looking for council action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for approval of Resolution 20061, Approving Professional Services Agreement with Welsh Comer &amp; Associates Incorporated for the design work of, finally, La Crosse Avenue.
Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Miller?
Aye.
McEvers?
Wee-wee.
Gookin?
Yeah.
Wood?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion carried.
I had to dig deep for that.
Thank you.
We'll move on to, thank you, Chris. We'll move on to Council Bill Number 20-1019, Amendment to the Municipal Code with a bunch of numbers to remove the reference to Sterling Codifiers and allow for the codification company for the city code to be named via resolution. Mike?
We're looking for a wee-wee here, too. So, for many years, Sterling Codifiers, who was a local company out of Hayden, I believe, published our municipal code, and they have been purchased by another company. The owners have retired. Our current ordinance specifies that our code will be published by Sterling Codifier. So, to correct what is in the code right now, we would encourage this amendment that just says we will publish it with a company designated by resolution. So, right now, we're using American Legal Publishing, and they're the ones that bought Sterling Codifiers. And so, we would recommend continuing to use them. But in the future, if there was another company or we wanted to change, you could change it by resolution. It would not be in our city code. So, the first step would be getting a wee-wee on this amendment to our city code to allow us to do it by resolution. The next item would be the resolution that recognizes American Legal Publishing as our current designated codifier for our municipal code.
Council questions for Mike on this? Woody?
Just have a quick one. Mike, so is this a bid process, or is this, nobody does this but these guys?
Yeah, that's basically the answer. Nobody does it but these guys. So, we could publish it ourselves, but I think that most cost-effective in what we've done over the years. So, when you guys pass an ordinance, we send it to them. They put it in a book in a format that people can get to and use and then post it online. So, it's not really, not a lot of people doing that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mike? We'd be looking for council action.
I'll move it. I'll make a motion to dispense with the rule and read Council Bill 201019 once by title only.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
McEvers?
See.
Gookin?
Aye.
Wood?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Aye. Stay in with me.
Is that motion carried or not? If you could read the title, please.
Council Bill Number 20-1019, An Ordinance of the City of Coeur d'Alene, Cootney County, Idaho, Amending Coeur d'Alene Municipal Code Section 1.01.01 Regarding Publication of the Municipal Code, Providing for the repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, providing for the publication of a summary, and providing for an effective date.
The next part?
Oh. Sorry. Move to adopt Council Bill 201019.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
McEvers?
Oh, yes.
Gookin?
I'm in favor.
Wood?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried. Mike, so this is just an extension item number three. Do you have anything to add there?
Not really. This is the resolution. So, you just passed a code amendment that would allow the designation by resolution, and now here's the resolution designating American Legal Publishing as the publisher of our city code at the present time.
Okay, so we'd be looking for council action?
So, Mr. Mayor, I would like to move to approve Resolution 20062, Approving American Legal Publishing to be the current codification company of the city.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Gookin?
Oh, yeah.
Wood?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Aye.
McEvers?
Yippee.
Motion carried. Thank you. Mike? We'll move on to our public hearings. Our first public hearing is a quasi-judicial hearing, ZC-2-20, Proposed Zone Change from R12 to C17 at 217 West Cardwell Drive. The applicant is a Thomas Fisher. Going to ask, does any council member have a conflict of interest here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. None seen. We'll turn it over to Tammy for a staff report.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and council. So, this evening, we have a request for a zone change from R12 to C17. The property owner is Andrea Queen, and the applicant's representative is Tom Fisher. So, the property is located near the southeast corner of the intersection of Cardwell Drive and A Street. And this is a location map, and this is our subject property outlined here in the red. Government Way is here, and Cardwell Drive is here, and I'll reference A Street a couple times in my presentation. And this is a closer view of the subject property. So, as I mentioned, Cardwell Drive, A Street, Government Way, and the freeway here. So, I'll give you a little background information. At the regular Planning Commission meeting on July 20, excuse me, July 14, 2020, the Planning Commission held the public hearing for this request and recommended approval of the zone change. Following that meeting, the applicant's representative requested that staff delay scheduling the item on council's agenda because the property owner was contemplating options as to whether they wanted to move forward with the zone change or pursue a special use permit, but that explains the delay in getting this on the agenda. So, as I mentioned, the property is located north of I-90 and west of Government Way along Cardwell Drive. There is an existing single-family dwelling unit on the property as well as an accessory structure on the subject site. The single family was built in approximately 1960, and the pole building was constructed in 1995. The property owner would like to use the accessory structure as a gym or commercial recreation if this zone change is approved. And this is a bird's eye view looking north at the subject property. And there are four required findings this evening for this request for a zone change. Finding B8, that the proposal is or is not in conformance with the comprehensive plan. And this is designated as Appleway North Fourth Street, and the subject property is approximately here, and this is the boundary of the Appleway North Fourth Street area. And it is located in the transition area denoted in this green. And there are comprehensive plan policies noted in your staff report on pages four, five, and six. Finding B9, that the public facilities and utilities are or are not available and adequate for this proposed use. So, you'll find in your staff report comments from Engineering Streets, Water, Fire, Wastewater Departments, who have reviewed the application request in regard to the public utilities and the facilities. And each department has indicated that there are adequate public facilities and utilities available to serve this proposed use, and there were no objections to the zone change as requested. Finding B10, that the physical characteristics of the site do or do not make it suitable for the request at this time. The site is generally flat, and there are no topographical or physical constraints that would make the subject property unsuitable to change the zoning from R12 to C17. And as I mentioned, it is located north of I-90 and west of Government Way with a single-family and accessory structure on it. So, I've taken, I've included the site photos that I took in July when this went forward to the Planning Commission, and yesterday I went out and visited the site and included a few new ones. So, this is looking northeast along A Street and Cardwell Drive toward the subject property. And there's a single family. And you can see there's some vegetation that's a bit overgrown in these slides.
Is that law up to code?
And this is a view of the subject property along Cardwell Drive again. And this is an updated picture I took yesterday. As you can see, a lot of the vegetation's been cut, and they've done quite a lot of cleanup. This is looking east toward the subject property at the accessory structure located here. And then, this is the updated site photo I took yesterday. And as you can see, again, they've done a lot of cleanup and put some asphalt down on the site and painted the building, so trying to do some upgrades. And this is looking northeast at the neighboring property abutting the subject property, and it's a multifamily use there. And this is looking north from A Street along the frontage of the subject property. Cash &amp; Carry is located here. And then, this is looking southwest along A Street toward the neighboring residence. That's a single-family dwelling unit use. And this is looking east along Cardwell Drive toward Government Way, and I-90 is on the south side. Finding B11, that the proposal would or would not adversely affect the surrounding character of the neighborhood with regard to traffic, neighborhood character, and/or the existing land use. So, the proposed zone change itself would not adversely affect the surrounding area with regard to the traffic. As you know, there's no traffic generated with a zone change alone. The ITE trip generation manual estimates at 1.41 a.m. peak hour trips and 3.53 peak hour trips would be generated per thousand square feet of retail floor area. If, it is therefore estimated that the existing shop could generate approximately 3 a.m. and 7 p.m. peak hour trips. And construction of a larger facility could produce more trips, but the size of this parcel limits the extent of the potential growth on the site. And Government Way does have the available capacity to accommodate the additional traffic generated from the subject site. And the access in and out of Cardwell Avenue could be slightly more congested during peak hours, and left turns could be a challenge along Government Way. So, this is a land use map, and this outline is the subject property. And as you see, the yellow indicates single-family dwelling here, here, and then here. And multifamily is designated by this color here and here, and vacant. And these are all commercial uses, and commercial uses about this. And this is the zoning map. So, the property, again, is zoned R12 with C17 here on this east side, R17 to the north with that multifamily use. And across the street to the west, they're commercial zones, but does have a residential use. And here are the zone changes that have happened over the years. We've got ZC-789 from R12 to, I believe it was, R17. And these were both rezoned from R12 to C17. And again, they're asking for a zone of C17. both rezoned from R12 to C17. And again, they're asking for a zone of C17. The C17 district is intended as a broad-spectrum commercial district that permits limited service, wholesale, retail, and heavy commercial in addition to allowing residential development at a density of 17 units per gross acre. The district should be located adjacent to arterials, however, joint access developments are encouraged. And I've provided in your staff report a list of a few of the principal uses that are permitted in the C17 zoning district. So, there are all the uses that would be allowed should you approve this zone change, and the item that the applicant would like if it were rezoned is commercial recreation, to have a gym. So, the decision point is provide a decision regarding the proposed zone change from R12 to C17 for approximately .43 acres. And the city council will need to consider this request and make the appropriate findings to approve, deny, or deny without prejudice. So, any questions for me?
Council questions for Tammy?
Just a quick one, Tammy. So, there's no through streets there to get out of there?
No.
Okay. Nothing goes north?
A Street dead ends. Let me show you the, so, this is A Street, and it dead ends, and this is Cash and Carry.
It's actually O'Reilly's.
Oh, O'Reilly, excuse me.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
That, excuse me. That was one of my questions, and the other was, the one that, straight across the street, you said it's a residential, but it's actually zoned C17, but there's just a house there now.
That's correct. It is zoned commercial. Let me get to my zoning map for you. Yeah, the zoning on the property just across the street is C17, but it does have a single-family dwelling unit on it.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, just a comment.
Christie?
The owners, new owners, whatever, have done a nice job cleaning it up. When you look at those pictures, the comparison is, I would just commend you for the nice job you've done. Looks much better.
All right. So, Tammy, do we have an applicant?
We do.
Okay. So, it says that the applicant is Thomas Fisher.
Actually, the property owners are here this evening.
Okay. All right.
Let me get back to a photo for you all. Okay.
So, I do have Andrea and Josh Queen. Who are in favor, wish to testify? Come on up.
Unless you need me to talk, I don't need to.
Oh, well, you can.
Do you have any questions for me? First, actually, it's not really a gym. I do one-on-one personal training.
Renata, do you want to, yeah, we got to go through the formalities here.
Sorry.
I need to swear you in really quick. So, do you swear that the testimony you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Josh.
So, it's not really a gym. When people say gym, you think of a lot of people coming and going. I train four days a week, about 25 hours a week, and I do one-on-one sessions. And so, it's just a little mom-and-pop shop when you think of a gym. It's more of a private training studio. But other than that, if you guys have any questions for me about it?
Any questions for Josh? I think we're good. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you. So, that, I did open the public testimony portion of that. Anyone else wishing to give public testimony on that? If not, I will close the public testimony portion of that and look for council action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to approve ZC-2-20, changing the zoning property located at 217 West Cardwell Drive from R12 to C17, as requested by Thomas Fisher, and to make, and to adopt the planning and zoning findings.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call. Oh, I'm sorry, Dan.
I was just going to comment, this is, I'm happy to see something done here. This seems like it's an island in the city that was probably created when they put in the freeway. And, yeah, and it's kind of sad. I mean, it is residential in there, but, I mean, you look at that map, and you see the red, and so, it's the way it's going to go. It's good to see something going in there that's hopefully going to generate some business, make someone some money.
All right. Thank you. Roll call, please, Renata.
Wood?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Aye.
McEvers?
Me.
Gookin?
Positive.
Motion carried.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to dispense with the rule and read Council Bill 20-1020, once by title only.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Renata, if you could read the title, please.
We need to do a quick little roll call first.
You go ahead and do that roll call real quick.
Okay. Wood?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Aye.
McEvers?
See.
Gookin?
Absolutely. Motion carried. Now, Renata, if you could please read the title.
Council Bill Number 20-1020, An Ordinance Amending the Zoning Act of the City of Coeur d'Alene, Cootney County, Idaho, known as Ordinance Number 1691, Ordinances of the City of Coeur d'Alene, By Changing the Zoning of the Following Described Property from R12 to C17, A Plus or Minus .43-Acre Portion of a Parcel Located at 217 West Cardwell Drive, Repealing All Ordinances and Parts of Ordinances in Conflict Here With, Providing a Severability Clause, Provide for the Publication of a Summary of this Ordinance and an Effective Date Hereof.
One final piece of business on that?
Move to adopt Council Bill 201020.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wood?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Aye.
McEvers?
Me.
Gookin?
Of course.
Motion carried. Hey, Josh?
Yeah.
This is the easiest one I've ever seen.
I really appreciate it, guys.
Yeah, you can roll through that one. All right, we'll move on to the legislative hearing that we have tonight. This is V-20-204. It's a vacation of a portion of Fourth Street Right-of-Way adjoining the westerly boundary of lots nine through 14 of the Sims Addition to the City of Coeur d'Alene. And we have Dennis Grant that has zoomed in. Right, Renata?
Yeah.
No.
If you're asking whether we can hear you, the answer is no.
Thank you, fellas. Sleep.
Yeah, Dennis, you'll need to unmute yourself.
All right. Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now. Dennis, go right ahead. Don't mute yourself.
Okay. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Got too excited. Okay, the applicant, Gordon Dobler, on behalf of George Lawrence, is requesting the vacation of a portion of Fourth Street Right-of-Way that adjoins the westerly boundary of the property on the northeast corner of Fourth Street and Poplar Avenue.
Dennis, let me stop you there. We're losing the, we're losing the volume. So, I don't know if you need to speak closer to the microphone, or what's going on there?
Oh, that's crazy. I'll try this.
Okay, that's good. Right there.
Okay. So, there is a picture that you should be able to see that shows a yellow strip of land there, and that's the area to be vacated. And it's right along Fourth Street and between Poplar Avenue and Locust Avenue. The requested right-of-way was originally dedicated to the City of Coeur d'Alene in the amended plat of Sims Addition back in 1905. The vacation of the requested right-of-way would not have any financial impact on the city and would add approximately 3,000 square feet to the county tax roll. Although a minor amount, it would be a benefit to the municipality as tax revenue and to the landowner whose lot adjoins the strip of usable property. Out of 31 certified mailing sent, I received one response back, and it was neutral. The purpose of this request is to vacate this 10-foot strip of land along Fourth Street. And Fourth Street is developed to its ultimate width in this location, and the additional right-of-way can be incorporated into the development of the adjoining property. In addition, the right-of-way width to the north of this property is narrower, preventing future widening without acquisition of additional right-of-way. All utilities are existing and in place, and there is no foreseeable use for this additional right-of-way. The Development Review Team was informed about this vacation. So, the recommendation is that city council should approve the vacation action per Idaho Code 50-1306, and to vacate property to the applicant, Gordon Dobler, on behalf of George Lawrence of American Holdings LLC. Thank you.
All right, questions? Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Dennis, I think I heard you, because it was a question I got on the internet, which is if we wanted to expand Fourth Street in the future, we can't, because this thing jogs over up above where the yellow bar stops. Is that?
That is correct. If you look north of Locust, you'll see the right-of-way line is abutting the back of sidewalk, where the area of request is about 10 feet behind the back of sidewalk. So, we would have to purchase right-of-way up to the north. And then, if you go further to the south, the same thing happens. So, for whatever reason, during the platting process back in 1905, they allowed that excess 10 feet there. So, that's why we're in this situation.
Thank you.
Good question.
Any other questions for Dennis? Okay, we will open the public testimony portion. I don't have anyone on the list signed up. I don't believe there's anyone to give public testimony. So, I will open and then close the public testimony portion of it, and then look for council action.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we dispense with the rule and read Council Bill 201021 once by title only.
Motion, we have a second.
Second.
Sorry, Dennis. Yeah. Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, Dennis?
Yes.
Are you still here?
Yep.
Mr. Gookin asked you about that, the way the line would jog, and it's the only spot on Fourth Street that's going to do that?
No. If you look south of Poplar Avenue, it's the same thing. Those property owners would have the opportunity to do the same.
So, you're getting it even with north of Popular?
North of Locust, that's correct.
Okay, I see. And below also, right?
Well, it's a little deceiving, but I think there's also 10 feet of area that could be vacated, also south of Poplar. But if you go further down towards, like Harrison, the right-of-way jumps back out to the back of sidewalk.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thought of something else, Dennis. So,
Yeah.
One of the reasons that people do this is so they can build on it. Is that the intent here?
That is correct. The property owners have their design for their business, and they want to maximize the use of the land that's around there. And if they hire some engineers, they know about the vacation process, and that allows them to use more land. And then, the benefit to the city is we get more taxes out of it.
Yeah, thank you. Well, I didn't think that was their priority, paying taxes. I just, maybe they're going to build something.
Yeah, okay.
So, we have a motion and a second on the floor to dispense with the rules. Roll call, please.
Thank you. Sorry, I didn't catch who seconded.
It was Christie.
Okay, thank you. Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Aye.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Delighted to.
Wood?
Yes.
Motion carried. Renata, can you read the title, please?
Council Bill Number 20-1021, An Ordinance of the City of Coeur d'Alene Vacating a Portion of North Fourth Street Right-of-Way in the amended plat of Sims Addition, Recorded in Book B of Plats on Page 57, Recorded as Plat Number 57, Records of Cootney County, Coeur d'Alene, Idaho, Generally Described as That 10-Foot Strip Adjoining the Westerly Boundary of Lots Nine Through 14, Block 44 of Said Plat, Repealing All Ordinances and Parts of Ordinances in Conflict Here With, Providing a Severability Clause, and Providing for the Publication of a Summary of this Ordinance and an Effective Date Hereof.
And we have one final piece of business on that?
Yeah, motion to adopt Council Bill 201021.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Aye.
McEvers?
Yeet.
Gookin?
Certainly.
Wood?
Yes.
Motion carried. And then, Woody?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
To everyone, we are adjourned.